I'd ask that everyone's.
And I think to get us started, as we have this special meeting tonight, that we do a roll call, just to recognize who's here.
Okay. Mr. Castellanos.
Present.
Ms. Capola.
Present.
Mr. Ford.
Present.
Ms. Gately.
Present.
Mr. Nicholson.
Present.
Ms. Sadowite.
Present.
Mayor McGee.
Present.
And with that, I think we can go into the presentation, why we're all here tonight.
Okay, thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thanks. Happy New Year.
Same to you.
So, the topic for this evening is evaluating the superintendent with the new, relatively new model for superintendent evaluation or educator evaluation that the state has legislated and regulated. I have to tell you that this is probably one of the most frequent workshops that I do, not only doing it for the first time, but committees will often ask me back once they've been through the process to figure out, gee, you know, it went okay, or we hit some bumps in the road, so how can we do it better? So, as we go along in the presentation, please feel free to jump in, ask questions, talk about where you are, you know, in relation to the process and how it relates to the tool. I'm going to describe the tool, and then I will go through how it actually works once you implement it. So, the superintendent evaluation is part of a new model for educator evaluation that came into being a number of years ago with the achievement gap legislation. Every licensed educator in the state is part of this model for educator evaluation. Part of the rationale for change was to make the evaluation model more tied to student achievement, and more as a tool to help educators continually improve their practice. It's different than most or many school committees used in the past, and to me, one of the benefits of it, as cumbersome as it can sometimes be, is that when it's done well, it's actually a much more objective tool than the subjective model that many committees were accustomed to using in the past. It also links the criteria to multiple measures, and at this point, all districts have to implement. The law went into effect in 2013, and there were a number of reasons why a lot of committees took maybe a few years to roll out using it with retired superintendent interim, you know, a lot of different reasons why. But at this point, all districts are supposed to have implemented this model for superintendent evaluation. Some of the things that we know about it, it does require greater attention than many of the models that people used in the past. When it's done well, and you pay a lot of attention at the beginning, you'll probably hear me emphasize this a number of times as we go through, when you pay a lot of attention to the whole process at the beginning, it makes it easier and easier at the end when you're actually doing the last step of the evaluation process. There's a lot of components that could be new to many school committee members, if particularly you've been on a school committee, maybe not looking so new if you're actually an educator day-to-day. There is an annual evaluation that's required in most cases. I would say, in every community, there's an expectation that the superintendent be evaluated on an annual basis. In the model, a more, someone who would have reached the status of professional status, does not necessarily have to be evaluated every year, but then in the interim year, there would be a formative evaluation. There's a standard format used, and I'll talk about the standard format, and there are also ways that you can adapt it to your local circumstances, to your local desires, and I'll talk a little bit about the ways that the tool can be adapted as well. Any questions up until this point?
Just a quick question. Member Sadowite. You said that this law was implemented or enacted or scheduled to be in effect in 2013?
Yeah, it was either 11 or 13, I'm not quite sure. It was the achievement gap legislation that came out of.
Eleven.
Eleven, yeah. That came out of the Race to the Top funding that the state got. That was the, the part of getting that funding was passing the legislation.
And within that legislation, is there a penalty for not having this enacted?
No, there's an expectation, and there are elements of the, every educator's evaluation that are reported to the, to DESI.
Okay.
But there's no, there's no stick.
Okay, but DESI knows that it's not.
DESI knows, yeah.
Okay.
DESI knows.
And we don't have one currently in our district?
Don't have.
The, you're here to help create one with us?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, I assume that this, that there's some way that the, that the superintendent has been evaluated, and maybe not quite fitting this model, but.
Okay.
Close enough to be able to report things to DESI in the past.
Member Capola, you have a question?
Just, just for Attorney Sadowite's, we have evaluated the previous superintendent, and I think John, it's in three occasions, so, you know, from 2011.
Yeah, I would, yeah, in fact, I.
I just, because Michael's new, so I'm wondering if he is thinking that we had never evaluated his superintendent.
Member Nicholson?
Yeah, just to add on that context, we, we had gone through this tool as a committee previously, and we had started the process for the last superintendent. I don't know if you remember, we went over the goals that we had set for the last superintendent, so that was, that was based on this tool.
Okay.
So, we were going through that process when she retired.
So, this might look familiar from some of our past workshops, sort of the idea that, you know, you want that goal alignment throughout the district, and part of that goal alignment is that the goals of the superintendent be aligned to the district goals. That's just to kind of set the table a little bit. So, there are three components to this model. The first is a five-step cycle, the second is a two-part tool, and the third is a multi-part rating system. I'll go through each of those components. So, the first is a five-step cycle. So, the evaluation cycle is going to begin and end with some sort of a self-assessment or report-out of the year passed, or the evaluation cycle passed. So, you kind of know where you stand to start with, and out of that assessment or report-out, you'll, the, the new goals will be developed. You sort of look at, you know, what is the next set of goals that would make sense for the superintendent to have, again, to drive that district forward and, and have that alignment. So, you set the goals, and those goals, again, would be SMART, so they would have an action plan associated with them. Then the plan, once it's approved by the school committee, gets implemented. Partway through the cycle, there's a formative assessment. The formative assessment is not a written evaluation. It's really just a check-in. Where do we stand? Are we making progress? Are there any things we need to tweak in the goals? For instance, a goal might have been set with the assumption that a grant was coming through to fund something. The grant didn't come through, kind of means you can't do the goal, and you've had a tool taken away from you. So, do you adjust the goal at that point? So, it's, it's a check-in, a chance to ask questions, and ideally, that formative assessment is not the only time you're talking about the goals and the work of the superintendent throughout the year. You're really using your meetings to monitor progress in the district, so that that formative assessment is not like the only time between the beginning and the end that you're thinking about the goals. Does that make sense?
Can I just ask, I think if we put the light off over there, it's a little tough to see. Please.
And then at the end of the cycle, there's a summative evaluation. Part of the information that you'll have to prepare that summative evaluation, again, is that report or, and some documentation that shows the progress that's been made throughout the year. Everybody with me so far?
Yes.
So, then, there are two parts to the model for evaluation. The first part is goals. And the goals will be, should be SMART. You probably remember us talking about this acronym: Specific and Strategic, Measurable, Action-Oriented, Rigorous, Realistic, and Results-Focused, and Timed and Tracked. SMART goals also have key actions and benchmarks, so you have some idea of what is going to happen specifically, and when it should be achieved, or when it's going to happen. There are three goal areas that there should be goals in. There should be a professional practice goal. That's a goal where the superintendent is working on upping or improving their own professional practice, so where can they have some growth? A student learning goal, pretty obvious, right, something that further student learning, and district improvement, two to four district improvement goals. Sometimes the student learning goal and the district improvement goal, you might say, well, it looks like we have more student learning goals than maybe not district improvement. Nothing wrong with that. Sometimes the district improvement goal might be related more to facilities, or budget, or something like that. Any questions up to this point? I'm assuming at this point that your goals have been set for the year, right? So, that's part one of the tool, the goals. The second part is the standards and indicators of effective professional practice, and that comes from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And I'm just gonna flip this over this way to pass. So, you might have seen this in the past. It looks like a daunting document, so don't, I'll talk about making it less daunting as we go through this. So, the department has set certain standards of practice. Those standards are instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. So, don't, you don't have to look at that right now. I'll be talking about it a little bit more in a minute. But those are the four sta, or the four standards that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has set. Within each standard, there are indicators. Within each indicator, there are elements, and within each, for each element, there are descriptors that describe what that element looks like when it's implemented at certain levels of practice. So, just to give you an example, one standard is instructional leadership. Within instructional leadership, one indicator would be curriculum. So, within instructional leadership, curriculum, implementing a curriculum is part of being an instructional leader, or instructional leadership. So, there's a definition of curriculum. And part of curriculum, having a good curriculum would be having a standard-based unit design. So, if there's a standard-based unit design, what does that look like between, on a continuum between needs improvement and exemplary? So, there's a description of what needs improvement would look like, unsatisfactory, proficient, and exemplary. When you look at that document, you'll notice that proficient is always in bold. That's because the department considers proficient to be a very high and acceptable level of practice. If you look at exemplary, it always ends, the description always ends in, can model this for others. So, exemplary is, not only do they do it at a very proficient level, but they do it in a way that others could and should be able to follow that level of practice. Does that make sense? So, you'll notice that's rather thick and cumbersome. Hold that thought aside, because we're going to talk about making it less thick, less cumbersome. Any questions on that up until this point? So, lastly, there's a rating system. So, you take the goals, and you're going to rate the goals on did not meet, up to exceeded. Going to rate the standards on unsatisfactory up to exemplary. Then you combine those two for an overall summative rating from unsatisfactory, again, up until exemplary. And, yeah, Michael, you asked about reporting. The information that goes to DESI when all this is said and done is only the overall rating and the rating on each standard. So, they get just a few words out of all the work that you do for educator evaluation. Make sense?
Yes.
So, the three components are the five-step cycle, the two-part tool, and the multi-part rating system. Everybody with me so far? So, then the question is, how does it work when you've got all those things and you need to put them together? If you want to go to the DESI website, you'll probably find hundreds of pages of information on how to get this to all work. So, we've worked really hard to break this down to a way that's understandable and workable. At the beginning of the cycle, you're going to create the evaluation document, which it sounds like you've already done, right? You have the goals set for the evaluation at the beginning of the cycle. So, you work with the superintendent to draft the goals. Sounds like that's been done. And then, when you think about that, sometimes a larger committee will use a subcommittee to do that work. It's easier than sort of, you know, wordsmithing and drafting all as a large committee. So, the subcommittee will work with the superintendent to draft the goals. Very often recommended, I can't actually think of any time when it's not, a recommendation of the superintendent coming forward and saying, these are the goals I recommend for the year, and then having that discussion. Ultimately, it's the school committee that has final approval on what those goals are. In the legislation, actually, if there is a difference of opinion between the evaluator, which would be the school committee, and the valuate, which in this case is the superintendent, the evaluator prevails on what the goals are. But it's a school committee votes final approval and says, yes, these are the goals that the school, the superintendent will be evaluated on going forward. Once you've set the goals, then you can go into the rubric and select a limited number of elements or indicators to evaluate the superintendent on. You don't have to use that entire document. Some committees that have tried to use that entire document have not been successful at it, and it's been very difficult for them. So, we really highly recommend that you go into that document and pick a limited number of elements that most relate to the goals. So, set the goals first. That's what makes it for Lynn, right? That's what makes it, what's going to drive your district forward, and then go in and look at what the elements are that most relate to the goals, and limit your evaluation to I lost my train of thought. Oh, the, the trick, though, is that every standard must be evaluated. So, as you're picking which parts of the model to choose, or which part of the rubric to choose, just make sure that you have every standard represented. Does that make sense? Does that coincide with what you're on track with at this point in the evaluation?
We haven't started.
Oh, but, and so far is developing the tool?
Yes.
Okay, okay. You can also decide on the weighting of the standards. So, if you think there's four standards, and if they're all weighted the same, they would be 25% each, right? If you decide that there's some reason why one deserves more attention in this evaluation cycle, you can weight it more, and that'll come out on the overall rating of the standards. Obviously, if you weight one higher, then you have to figure out which one you're going to wait lower, because it has to be 100% overall. I've talked about this for a number of years, and I have yet to find a district that has decided to weight the standards. So, it's, it's an option. It's a way you can adapt the tool. It's, if it's used at all, it's certainly not a very widely-used option. And then, one of the things that, to me, this is part of what makes the whole process easier at the end, is to talk about what evidence you will see that will help you understand that the goals have been met and the standards have been implemented. So, we're not flies on the wall all day as the superintendent is doing his job. So, to be able to talk about, you know, how will the district look different a year from now as this goal is implemented? What do you expect to see change, or how do, what improvement do you expect to see? And how will you show us, the committee, that that work has been done? Are really valuable questions to ask, for a couple reasons. Again, we're not all flies on the wall, so it helps us do a better job of the evaluation, and it helps seven or eight people make sure that they all have the same view of what's supposed to happen. If the goals aren't clear to everybody, then people can develop sort of different ideas about what's supposed to happen. At the end, it's much easier if people have the same understanding. When you're doing that composite evaluation, you'll find that the ratings will all be much tighter and closer if you've all had that discussion at the beginning, so you have the same idea of what's gonna, what, what the accomplishments will be at the end. Does that make sense to everybody? That's why it's in red, because that's, that's the important discussion to have in my book. So, just a, just a little checklist. First of all, you're going to agree on the goals, and then, related to what I was just talking about, think about the outcomes that you want for those goals. SMART goals can have outputs, which is tasks, outcomes, which are changed, how is, how are attitudes or practices or something going to change? So, you want to know what the outcomes you're looking for are. Just as another note, goals don't always have to only be yearly goals. You can have goals that go over a couple years if you have something really ambitious that you want to continue to work on, and you know will take a time to implement. And in that case, if you're doing an annual evaluation, you would sort of mark out, well, what do we expect to have in this year? And that would be what you would be evaluating on. You want to agree on the applicable elements from the rubric. You don't want to have too many. Again, you'll overwhelm yourselves, and that, to me, that's sort of takes away from the value or the strength of the evaluation if you're trying to spread yourselves too thin in evaluating. Determine the weighting of the standards if you wish, and then, again, talk about the evidence that you'd like to see that will help you understand the work that's been done. Making sense to everybody? Then you can use that to create that year-long agenda that I think we talked about before of, you know, when does it make sense to see certain presentations that will help us understand the work that's being done? And that goes to that ability to sort of monitor all year long, and not just think about things mid-year when you do the formative, and at the end of the year, when you're sort of, potentially, if you're not monitoring all year long, sort of getting a data dump of evidence of what's going to happen. If you're monitoring all year long, then that, that self-assessment at the end, or that report at the end, is more like reminders of the work that you've seen done, and, and the growth that you've seen throughout the course of the year. Does that make sense to everybody? Yes?
What sounds challenging is, these are political seats. So, every two years, we're up for election, and we start in January, which seems to be the middle of the school year. So, you know, we, we have our opinions on how the progression and work is of the superintendent, but at the time where the evaluation's going to take place, it might not matter. How do you document or, or keep track of where we believe the superintendent is throughout the year?
So, if you're, to think about that for a minute. So, if you're evaluating over the course of a year, January could be the point where you're doing the check-in, right? The formative evaluation and having that discussion, that might be one way to address it. Does that make sense?
Okay. So, there's, obviously, this isn't a challenge just for us. It's probably a challenge for other districts, so it'd be nice to see how they go about doing that.
Yeah, well, and I'll talk a little bit about the things that are adaptable to local choice in a couple minutes.
Okay.
That might help answer, or might confuse matters more. I'm not sure which. So, you know, when I, we talked a little bit, I'm going to get to your question very shortly. We talked about some, what I've talked about so far is pretty much what's required, you know, the, the goals, and the standards, and the, the ratings. So, the required are the four SMART goals in the three areas, the ratings, and the overall summative rating. So, what is, what are optional things that you can think about as you're implementing this tool? You don't need to use all the elements and indicators. Again, more successful has been the trend if you don't use them all. You can weight the standards differently. The timing of the evaluation cycle is actually up to the district. I've, actually, a lot of districts before this model came into place would time the evaluation cycle with the election cycle. I'm finding many more districts are timing it to the school year, because that makes sense so far as implementing the goals. I, people have really almost gotten away from that timing it to the election cycle. I'm not really quite sure how to answer your question, in terms of the, you know, the way that, so, part of the reason that the superintendent is evaluated in public, right, is because that's the way the public evaluates the job the school committee's doing. Part of the rationale for having the evaluation in this, end of the school year, is because that's when the work is done, and that's when you're, you're seeing the completion of the work. It's very often also when you're looking at the contract of the superintendent, and thinking about extension, or raise, or things like that. I understand what you're saying. You might only have, if you're up every two years, you might only have, say, a year and a half of progress to be able to see. I think part of that is, is being able to show the community that the work is ongoing. Does that make sense? That's kind of the, only the, the best way that I can answer it. If you're consistently monitoring, if you're consistently, consistently asking the questions of how things are being implemented, and consistently able to show that progress, it might take away some of that, you know, what we talked about, just thinking about it at one point in time.
I agree with you. So, we have to be smart with what we put on the agenda to make sure we're measuring the stuff that, where our goals are throughout the year, and whoever comes after us will have that data and knowledge as well. So, it, they'll be informed through that process. So, I, I understand. Thank you.
So, again, the timing of the cycle, again, what makes sense to you? I think we've just kind of had that discussion, so we don't need to go any further. And then, you get to the end of the cycle, and you need to complete the evaluation. You'll get a form. I can pass this out to, this comes from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. You don't actually need to use this form if you think of a better way to do it yourself. It's also a Word document, so if there, there are ways you can tailor it to make it your own. You can populate it with the goals that are your goals. You can change the way some of the standards and indicators are outlined to take away things that you're not looking at, or emphasize things, emphasize things that you are looking at. So, there is, is a way to simplify that tool. It's kind of cumbersome to work with, and it's also not required. So, if you find a, a better way to do it, you could probably market it. But this is what most people end up using. So, when you have that, when you're ready to prepare your own individual evaluation, you'll have the information from the superintendent. Very often, more and more superintendents are talking about building up some sort of Dropbox, or Google folder, or something throughout the year. So, as evidence is created, it's put in that, and it builds up through the year for you to be able to keep track, you know, that, keep track of progress on the goals, and have that evidence in front of Once everyone has created, taken their own individual, filled out their own individual form, then it goes to some entity within the committee to create a composite evaluation. That, sometimes it's the chair who does it, designee of the chair, sometimes it's a personnel subcommittee, or, you know, some group within the committee that's charged with that responsibility. That responsibility basically is to take the individual evaluations and create one voice where everyone can sort of hear their own voice come through. So, it's not, it's not an easy process to go through. One of the things that has been successful, one of the ways committees have kind of run into trouble sometime with the evaluation process is that they don't understand quite the process that's going to be used to create that composite. So, they get bogged down, not on the superintendent's actual evaluation, but the process that was used to create the composite in front of them. So, if you can have that conversation ahead of time about whoever is doing the compiling, say, this is, this is how I'm going to look at it, or this is how we're going to consider the different, the different individual ones, and come to a composite. Might be things like, in the narrative section, that at least two people have to make a similar comment in the narrative for it to find its way into the composite. It might be how they're going to look at the different ratings and come up with what the composite rating is going to be. Does that make sense? The, the evaluation, as we've said, it's a public discussion, so what, however the composite is created and brought to the full committee, there can be a discussion, and there can be changes made. So, if you have a disagreement with how something was rated, or a comment that was made, or if you don't, if you made a comment that you feel was really important, don't see it reflected in the composite, you have the opportunity to make the case for editing that composite before it becomes the final evaluation. We talked before in roles and responsibilities, the superintendent only has one boss with many different heads and brains. The superintendent only gets one evaluation, and that's the final composite evaluation. So, it does, he doesn't get. So it does, he doesn't get seven different ones that all go into his file. It's the one composite evaluation that counts. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
The superintendent obviously has that wonderful pleasure of being evaluated in public. There is a new ruling from the SJC that might change the process that you followed previous to that public evaluation. In the past, the AG has been fine with that composite going into the packet to be discussed in public. If you release your packet to the public at the same time you release it to the committee members, you're all set. If that packet has, is held back until you actually discuss things at the meeting, the Supreme Judicial Court decided that in the committee reading the deposit, you were actually reading composite, you were actually reading other committee members' evaluations, which meant that that was a deliberation. So the composite evaluation needs to be released to the public or available to the public at the same time it's given to the committee. If you don't release your documents ahead of time regularly anyway, all you need to do is put a note on your agenda that the composite evaluation is available in the superintendent's office. So it's not, yes?
I've got a question about that. How, who, can, who makes the composite and how can it be publicly available if the person is reviewing? The person, whoever makes the composite must see everything at the same time, right? And so is, can that person see the various evaluations before they're published? Because they have to physically compile them.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Who, you know, who, it's the, it's the composite going to the full committee, who has not yet seen the composite, that triggers it also being available to the public. Makes sense?
Yes.
Yes?
Just to be clear, it could be the chair or a designated person and we could have a subcommittee that could help.
We could use the secretary of the school committee.
Yeah, we could use the secretary.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes.
But I'm just being clear on that.
And, and we've had, what, three or four meetings with you so far? It feels like, and I, I think that you, you're pretty good with how you have us all give our input. We put it on the stickies and then we see which match up, match up. And then we, that's how we have been able to form our general ideas or goals. So it seems like that's what you're saying again to us, that that's what you're going to do with what's in here. You're going to see what language kind of is similar to it and that's what will find its way to the final one. But anything that's very different, we have to work on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that make sense to everybody? Yes?
Are the, the individual evaluations that are, that the six of us submit, will that be public as well?
They're public if they were made available to everyone on the committee.
Which they're going to have to be.
Yeah. So, and, and very often they are, right? Because you need to know what, in order to have a good, good discussion, you probably want to see what everyone else was talking about. So if, if only the compositor sees the individuals, which happens on some smaller committees, then the individual ones don't have to be available. But if, if the full committee has seen everyone's individuals, then all those individual ones are public documents as well.
The, how we did it previously is myself and another person sat and we compiled the things like you were talking about. But then when we came to the full meeting, each person gave all, you know, said what it was, proficient, needs improvement, whatever. So we went down the line and did all. Is what you're saying, you don't have to do it that way? You just can come with the one document?
Yes.
We didn't, didn't have to really do that.
You could do it that way, but you don't have to.
You don't have to, okay. Yep.
Any other questions? Okay. So this is a short night compared to some of the other jobs that I've been in.
I think that's it.
That's it? Any questions? You feel like you have some sense of what's in front of you for doing the evaluation?
For, just to get a feedback from some of the members that have already been here, if some of us are new. So I know Donnie talked a little bit about it to you. How do you see this and as we're going forward, if you don't mind me asking?
How we, how we did the process before is exactly how Dorothy just explained it to us. And we did follow through. I think the bigger piece is coming back in and working with Dr. Tuttwiler in regards to which we've, you know, his goals, what we think would be, we want to evaluate them on. And that's how we did it before. Like Dorothy said, you can't evaluate on everything. You know, if he came in with 20 goals, for instance, you're not going to evaluate them on all 20 goals because that would be just too much. So you limited down. And I think we'd have to sit with the superintendent at another point and talk about which ones we feel as though we should evaluate them on. And he would, you know, have discussion that on...
Didn't we already vote on goals and there weren't many? I think there were only three and the, the attendance initiative was one.
Mm-hmm. There, there was one professional practice goal, four district improvement goals, and then there was one student learning goal that had three sort of indicators of success.
And your, your personal goal was to be mentored and go through the superintendent mentorship program and meet with someone once a month, et cetera?
Yep, that's the professional practice goal, yep.
And then one of the district-wide was the attendance initiative?
Uh, that was underneath the student learning goal.
Student learning goal, okay.
Just quickly, by way of reminder, four district improvement goals. One was to develop a strategic plan.
Yes.
One was to develop a strategy to, to address the overcrowding at the middle school level. Another was to address, to develop a strategy to increase the diversity of our, of our teaching staff. And then the fourth was to develop and implement a social and emotional learning curriculum, grades K to five.
Yes.
Professional practice was the new superintendent induction program. And then the student learning goal, the overarching statement was all students will increase in achievement. But then there were three indicators. One was around the attendance initiative. One was around closing the achievement gap for special education students, grades three through eight. And then a final one was increasing the proficiency of our English learners.
And one of the things that we...
As recall.
I'm pretty...
And one of the things that we...
Well-prepared.
One of the things that we, we feel to do after we approved that was set up some sort of way to, to measure the progress in order to make sure that they end up on the agendas, it sounds like.
So, there, I have it on there, on our look-ahead document. So I've got in March, hang on a second. I was planning to do an update, um, March 14th, update on SY 1819 district improvement goals. And then there are other points in other meetings where, for example, February 14th in the curriculum subcommittee, there's an SEL curriculum update. So that's one of the, so, yeah, the idea is to, over the course of the year, but...
And I know we've, we've spoken about the attendance initiative multiple times. So I, I know, because that, that's a big one. So, okay, good. So you, our look-ahead has those addressed, okay?
Yeah, the idea is to keep, keep you updated on how we're going. And I'm planning to do a pretty substantive one on the, on the 14th. But this evening, I, I don't know if it would behoove us to identify, to Attorney Saddlewhite's point, a, an evaluation timeline, like when, with your support, of course. Like when would be a, you know, an appropriate mid-formative and summative checkpoint?
If we're going by the school year?
Yep, yep. Well, it sounds like, in a way, it sounds like you have the formative planned already, right?
Yeah, I mean, I'd plan that, but I...
Yep.
If the group is okay.
Member Gailey?
Yep.
We started this in August, right?
Yep.
So in August, we started this and mid-year would be coming up soon. Dr. Tuttwiler has already let us know a formative assessment of the things that he has rolled out or the successes that they have felt and...
In a, in a way, yeah.
Well, that's what a formative assessment is. You don't, you don't have any actual data. You just sort of know that these are the signs that are showing that they are...
You know, I can say that one thing that school committee members tend to find very helpful when there's something related to the goals is just either in the presentation or a, a note on the agenda to just explicitly say, you're, you're hearing about this because it's related to the goal on student attendance. Or you're hearing about this because it's related to our goal around implementing SEL curriculum or... So that, that, that kind of keeps it front and center for everybody. And I think it helps at the end of the year when you're, when you're, you know, getting to the, writing up the, you know, thinking about writing up your individual evaluation, that, oh, yeah, you know, we've been hearing about all these things and I remember that presentation and it just, it, it just, it's a nice marker, I think, to help people make sure that that monitoring is happening on a regular basis.
That's what I was going to say. I think the evaluation should be done prior to the end of the school year. And, you know, that's basically an evaluation of, of his performance for that particular school from September to June. So I think it's important to get it done. I think, I don't think it, I, I slightly disagree. I don't think it, it weighs so much upon us. I mean, if there's a change of faces around here in, in a couple of years, it's still...
The same data.
The, the same evaluation that we have will be passed on, on Mr. Tuttwiler. It'll be just, the new people coming aboard will just have that evaluation.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. I think, you know, sometimes particularly in towns where they have spring elections and they want to do a June evaluation, so someone's only been on for a short amount of time, they do have discussions about, you know, if you've only been on for a short amount of time, your evaluation might be less than someone who's been on for longer. Because you'll have less time to actually evaluate. And that feeds into the whole process.
But the performance is still the same.
Yeah, and I think, you know, people coming on need to understand they're stepping into an ongoing operation and, and know that, you know, particularly once you have a strategic plan, that's going to go out over a number of years and not change every two years if a few people change on the, presumably, if a few people change on the, on the board.
Member Castellano?
So in fairness, just to the superintendent's, you know, fair evaluation, I think it's important to have a, a framework that's consistent. I agree. And I think having the consistency is very important. Again, like we're up for every two years, you know, potentially, we can have a rotation in phases. And for me, I think it's important to recognize that we have, you know, and now, now that we mentioned earlier, the district, the district-wide strategic plan, there's a lot of work being done. I think it's very important, just I think as all, as all committee members to just continue to capture the best we can, because everyone has a different perspective, whether you're reaching out to your constituents from the grassroots or from the organization. I think there's a lot of different community inputs that I'm getting, definitely ongoing. And it's different, different perspectives that we all get. But I think it's important to kind of get that framework, a rubric set up as we are having our meetings to make sure that we're having our agenda items matching up to his SMART goals so we can really fully effectively measure his, his performance. And again, it's fair to him as his contract will...
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly more fair to the superintendent than not to let him know what he's going to be evaluated on rather than what's the whim of the committee at the end of the evaluation cycle.
This is, this is the most attention that we've given to our, to this process consistently. We're doing it all year long. You come up with the goals and we're updating the performance. It's not like we lean into the air and dust it all up and then bring it out and, you know, let's evaluate it. Which, this is almost like an ongoing yearly evaluation. I think it's the transparency and everything is, is great.
Yes. Member Gailey?
I am really appreciate you coming in in August and appreciate Patrick calling this team meeting because when I first got on, and Jared can attest to it, it, it was very difficult to get our goals down, to know what we were looking at. This is running very smoothly for us. You have your goals. I could say, send me your goals, I need to look over these. And I can see the formative assessment. I, because I totally understand that when you roll it out, I know that this is happening. So I would like to really ask this committee if we could, you know, like to update Patrick's goal in August of 2019, if we're going to keep things or change things or whatever. So then when we roll out in September, we know what goals we're looking for. So you get a fair evaluation of the whole school year.
But what about this year's evaluation? When, when do we want to start?
Oh, we would do this in June. We would evaluate him for a year.
I'm at Nicholson, then Member Capola.
Um, yeah, I mean, echoing what the committee said, I, I think we are in great shape on the, on the goals. And I think we, the, the goals that we picked have been great and the updates we've been gotten, I think it's, have been great. I think it's a great suggestion to explicitly tie the, the goal and its number to the updates that we've been getting and that we will be getting over the course of this spring. I think we, we haven't yet picked emphases for the standards. And it might make sense for us to, to read this over and put that on the agenda for our next meeting. I think, I, because I, you know, having read through these standards previously, I think there's a lot of overlap with what we've, because we had a pretty broad set of goals with what the superintendent's already working on under the goals and what shows up on these standards. And we might sort of give a little bit extra weight to what, if, maybe request the superintendent to suggest standards, or sorry, the indicators that he would highlight and give a little bit of extra weight to that, given that we're picking them in, in February. And then also at the next meeting, sort of get to the specifics about which meeting we would, like have evaluations be due and exactly like how we would have them compiled so that we can sort of have a, a formula for the spring when that, when that happens.
I was just gonna, I was actually going to suggest, once you know the date you want to have the final one, to take a few minutes to sort of back out, what's the process to get to the final so that people don't all of a sudden find, oh, I only have 48 hours to do this whole evaluation? Or, you know, to think out that part of it too can be very helpful.
Member Capola?
I think the idea of the end of the school year is good, but if we were looking at the student learning goal and the academic achievement, we have to wait till the MCAS results or whatever we're calling it now come, come out. So we're talking like the fall for that. So, you know, without cutting ourselves short and only giving him six months, you know, from here to June, doing it, you know, completing it in the fall is a fine thing to do so that this piece here, you know, could be given the time to evaluate it. That's just, you know, a thought on all of us to just think that it doesn't have to be in June. Because how would you, how would you rate him on whether there was an increase of 3% points on some of those things? Or the change in the 48 to the 52? So, you know, going to the fall really gives him almost a full year in the first year. And it wouldn't be, it would be fair.
I agree.
I think it would be fair to him.
Dr. Tuttwiler?
I was just going to say the same thing that Mrs. Capola said. That's the one, so this was designed to be a one-year set of goals. But the one piece is that student learning goal, which we wouldn't know until really October is, is when Desi releases all of the information. We'll have some preliminary data, but it'll be embargoed usually until early October. So, so that might be a good time to do a final. But the rest of the pieces, all the district improvement goals, professional practice, all of those, I'd be able to, you know, keep you abreast of. And actually, by the end of the year, let you know where we stand definitively.
But we'll also give you time to study, like, for instance, if we are going to go about the attendance initiative, you know, I give you the summer to evaluate and be able to respond to us in how that attendance, whether it worked or it didn't work and...
What critiques?
And I, and I also think to, in, in the other discussion is about the, the timing and the elections and all, it, it actually plays into a period where you have a new election and a January commitment, but you have much more period of time for the new committee members to actually, you know, will have established the goals, but the new committee members can then actually evaluate through a period of time instead of a shortened window. So that in some ways addresses the concerns I think we're, Mike, Mike talked to related to the, the timing and the election. So I don't know what, how that works.
I mean, I, the timing's up to, the timing's up to the committee, the timing's up to the district. So there are no, absolutely no problem in doing that. the district, so there are no, absolutely no problem in doing that. I, if there are initiatives that are school year initiatives and you're not setting the goals until October, November, does that? I mean, I, I, I think there's ways around it, right? You could talk about the goals that you intend to have.
Well, that was going to be my question.
You know, so you have sort of little overlap?
I mean, we, either an additional following up on some of the goals, or establishing the goals-
Yep.
Going into the, but the fall would give us a chance to do the full evaluation of the current year, and then develop the goals before that period of time, which I think would be more than appropriate.
So you have sort of an overlap, but that seems-
And it's not like we can't change it the next year if we see that it's not working.
That, absolutely true.
So would you propose the goals, maybe propose the twenty-twenty goals in June, or twenty-twenty-one goals in-
Or, or maybe going over the summer, which we did last year, so it's not into the fall, but by September, we'd have the goals for twenty-twenty with the final evaluation coming in late September, October.
It's pretty typical for summer to be used as a planning time, right?
I think, member Nicholson had a question, then we'll go to the superintendent.
No, I was just gonna say quickly, on the look-ahead document, I have, um, June fourteenth, uh, pinned as a date to present on the strategic plan. Remember, that's a, a multi-year, um, plan, but, but, um, the idea is each year there'll be specific FOKI, and, and those will really inform the, the goals that I'm going to propose here. So, so you'll have some sense for the direction of the goals, really by the end of this year.
Member Nicholson.
Thank you. I was gonna say, and maybe we can use, uh, an opportunity in the summer, like we did last summer, to have a really robust discussion about the goals, and you, Dr. Tuttwiler could probably present a lot of his evidence and findings on all the other goals to make the, the fall evaluation more efficient, and then that would allow us to have a robust discussion about what the twenty goal, twenty goals could, could, should be, having already gotten a lot of the data on the twenty-nineteen goals.
Yeah, yeah, I like that. That, that timeline seems streamlined, and we're not, um, really rushing through the, through the summer. You know, we'll have that to, to really reflect ourselves on the work that we've done and, and feedback that we're getting, and then, um, come to the beginning of the school year, we're able to, to really, um, hit the ground running. And, um, just the, the timeframe matches up, too, you know, so August, September, we know what we're, we're dealing with for twenty-twenty, and then we do the final evaluation and, and we're good to go. Member Gailey.
In the final, in this scenario, we were waiting for the MCAS results to come out in October for the final.
Correct.
But we'll set the goals in the summer for yes.
We'll discuss them and then we'll vote on them, yes.
Makes a lot of sense.
Do we need to vote on that? Member Capola, then, member Nichols.
And Dorothy, was there a, another sheet that we plugged the goals into as well as the, um, I thought there was something, how we plugged it in, or did we just use this sheet here?
I think the, the goals were just plugged into that sheet.
Just plugged in on that, and then we, because I thought we had, like, another section for, for, uh, plugging in the, um, standards and indicate, indicating numbers.
You may have not used that exact form, someone may have-
Maybe we had one that we, we had the, just those-
Yeah, there's, there's no requirement, again, to use that form, and I think there, there may be other worksheets. It's, to me, it's a cumbersome document, but, so if someone found a way to tailor it to make it make more sense-
That was more simple. Like, in other words, we just had, like, the professional student learning, district improvement, and then we-
Go with that.
Then we went back and matched the elements and up with it for those numbers and-
Yep, yep.
Follow that.
Yep, that makes, yes.
Maybe, um, Mary could look for that and see if, you know, um, on previous that we maybe had that sheet.
I think it'll be available.
Yeah.
Of the, of the different indicators that we picked?
Um, yeah.
Have we picked them?
Well, it was, um, you know how this is here, but it also had a section where we would match in to it, um, picking from, from these elements.
I definitely have-
The indicators. Do you have that?
Indicators that we picked before, for the last evaluation. We never, we, we never finished because Dr. Letham retired, but I, I have that list of which, what we picked.
Exactly, exactly.
Right.
But it, it would be easy for new members to see, look at that old one, and then be able to understand how they're going to look over the different standards and fit them in.
Nicholson, do you have a question?
Oh, yeah, I was, I was gonna say, I, I imagine Dr. Tuttwiler also would be open. If we, if we had this goal discussion in August and then the final evaluation in October, we could always tweak the, the, uh, student learning-related goals based on the, the data that we get back from the MCAS, yeah, yeah.
Seems like everyone's in agreement on that?
I, I just want to make sure, I, I, uh, member Nicholson had mentioned the next meeting to discuss the emphases. Are we pushing that off, or are we leaving that, I'm leaving, I just plugged it into my look-ahead document here.
I mean, we, we only, we had to pick by tomorrow if it was going to be the actual next meeting.
No, I'm sorry, the fourteenth, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I think, I, I mean, I think the more time, the better in terms of everybody being on the same page about the emphases should be, if people are, are okay to, to get those together by then.
That shouldn't be an issue for me.
I mean, to me, it would make sense to take some recommendations from the superintendent on what ones make more sense.
So the following, a meeting from, from two weeks from Thursday, is what we're talking about.
Could, could Dr. Tuttwiler send us his recommendations prior to the meeting and then-
Absolutely.
Well, just me from public records, yeah, because then, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. It's part of a meeting packet, are my recommendations, yep.
Member Gailey.
I think I have that copy, you're looking for Donna, I mean, Mrs. Capola, and if we could get a copy for everybody, it's basically your PowerPoint, and, um, and it has some indicators, and this is-
I don't know if it's that one, Dorothy, there, that is a little different. And I think it's how we plugged him in.
The form on the DESI, um, website is a Word document, so you can, to the extent that you're proficient with Word, you can alter it, you know, and as I said, there's no requirement to use that. If you found it a, a simpler, more streamlined way to do it, go for it.
Any other thoughts, questions? So I would say that that's, uh, that's a wrap.
Motion to adjourn.
There's a, a motion to adjourn, a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, it's heaven. Thank you very much, very helpful, very great discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you.